Are we good? We're live. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August fifteenth staff meeting. So we got a few things on the agenda. So why everybody's here first.
Okay, we do a chairman. Good morning, Commission. We have three things to talk about today. Since we've moved to roughen over a year ago now, we've had some pretty consistent connectivity problems down in the chambers, down in the commission chamber. So I wanted Mike to talk about that today. What's going on and maybe some potential solution to that that comes with a little bit of a cost, but we can talk high level on that. So that's the first topic. Then Lindsay is going to talk about scenarios of mill levy reduction that was discussed in one of the open meetings. And we have she has some scenarios. We can have a discussion about that. And then the third item is we visited with all of you yesterday about the fire compensation plan, and we want to talk to today about that for publicly and have discussion, high level discussion amongst the commission about what their leanings are toward that. And then we'll bring that back to a meeting for for vote. So those are the three topics of the day I will let Mike start up with.
Okay, morning, Mike. Morning, morning, commissioners. I'm going to kick things off, and then I'm very quickly going to turn this over to our supervisor of the networking and telecommunications group, James Arns. So we have been working since before we moved into this building on ways to increase the connectivity and increase the cellular coverage down in the auditorium area. It's a challenge just because of the structure itself. But also with James, we have the lead network cabling technician here that's Cedric County employee, Jason Kelly, and then a engineer, a third party engineer for Miltel, Jake Malley, who's been very, very involved in the process and can get into the the granular details of what we've done. We do have, James, if you could come up. We do have both cellular and Wi-Fi down in that area. And I'm told that all of the commissioners phones have been have been given reservations on the guest Wi-Fi network so that you connect to it automatically anywhere in the building. There is one exception with an iPhone. That's kind of a variable, or if you've changed out phones, it's a it's a manual process to to kind of map those things in. That guest wireless did just change recently. Within the last month, we switched providers and went to a higher speed for it because it was fairly limited in the path that it takes out of the county. And so we've increased that speed. But I'm going to start first to talk about the cellular connectivity and what we've done there, what we're continuing to do, and some of the options that we're looking at that we could that we could take up in the future. So James, I'll turn that over.
Hey, my name is James Arns. I'm the sys admin networking telecom manager. I'm here to kind of just give you a quick overview, high level overview of the setup that's currently done in the auditorium. Right now, there is one antenna that's installed on the first floor that feeds two boosters. One booster is above where the stage is where you guys sit. And then the other one is back by the sound booth. That provides great coverage for that whole auditorium. This system was selected because of the size of the room. The size of that room is approximately just under sixty three hundred square feet. And this booster system provides a coverage for twenty thousand square feet. It also helps bring in the signal for 3G, 4G LTE and 5G. For AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile and US Cellular, it also helps provide a boost for other carriers, but it uses different frequencies. I know you guys have had concerns and issues with what's going on down there. Anytime we receive any of those concerns with signals, we make sure to have brought in Mel Tel to kind of take a look at the signal, make sure and verify what's going on and make any adjustments that are needed. It would probably be pretty beneficial to if you guys are having specific issues, kind of take it offline and we can go through each of those concerns or troubleshooting issues that you guys have, and we can kind of go through it and figure out the best way for a good solution. Like Mike mentioned, there is a good stopgap in there currently, which is the wireless that's in there. We have two access points in auditorium, just like we do with the mobile boosters. There's one above the stage and one back by the phone booth or with the sound booth. This, we are able to monitor and we have verified that the saturation in that room is very good. Guest Wi-Fi is excellent in that room. This is something the commissioners can use as well as the public. We have provided the tools to communications to be able to enable, disable and reset the password for that guest account. We can set specific accounts for the commissioners. You don't have to worry so much if it gets disabled by communications for whatever reason, or the password gets reset. You guys will have your own set. And you can also post that down in the auditorium for the public use. So hopefully that kind of gives you a high overview of what's going on. I can stand for questions and hopefully answer any you might have. And if not, I can turn it over to Jake to kind of answer the ones I can.
Okay, I'm big. Any questions? Thanks for addressing that. I didn't know what we were working on it. So it's, I think it seems to have improved.
Just curious, when did the cell antennas get installed? It's been a few weeks. How long was it that that improvement was made?
Jake, it's been about two months.
Okay, so about two months.
And we've added the second one in the sound booth within the last six weeks.
Well, I've just noticed the last couple of weeks, it's actually been better for the cell data, but I still have, I mean, prior to about two weeks ago, I I couldn't get any, I couldn't even get a text really, but right. Terms of the Wi-Fi, I guess I need to work with you individually because again, I can go on the guest Wi-Fi, but it just gives me air after air after air. It doesn't seem to want to. It's not usable. So I actually have to basically get up back off of guest Wi-Fi because it doesn't actually doesn't actually work. So if I'm having that experience, maybe there may be others as well.
Okay, any other questions?
Thanks for the update. Appreciate the work.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Next, mill levy discussion.
So commissioners, you, good morning. You may, and actually I'm going to ask Lorian to come sit up by me, even though I know she likes the back of the room like the other finance votes. So we discussed on budget recommendation day, a few different options for mill levy rate reduction, recognizing that budget adoption is next Wednesday. We want to make sure we have motions prepared for anything that you are considering discussing and possibly voting on. So Lorian had prepared some motions for you and passed them out that day. One was a point two five mill levy rate reduction. Another was a point five mill levy rate reduction. We had shared at that time that with the point two five reduction, we thought that that was going to be enough that we could absorb that through one time costs, appropriate use of fund balance spending in accordance with your policy. But we had shared that if there was a point five mill mill levy rate reduction, we would probably need to look for some recurring reductions to the budget. Because that sets the baseline going forward, obviously. So we haven't really had any in-depth conversations at this point of what those reductions would look like. And so I just wanted to try and get a feel from the commission. If those same two motions should be provided next week, if there were alternative motions you wanted to look at with regard to that. Again, because this will have a compounding effect, we will reset the mill levy rate in the financial forecast to whatever all you all approve. So we just needed a little bit of direction from you if point two five and point five weren't going to be the ones you wanted. So we have time to prepare motions.
And are you, I had mentioned to Tom last week, I don't know if he mentioned you, but when I was looking at that and considering that somewhere in between there ironically would be reduction to the to a flat twenty nine mils. Which would, for us, it might be easier to communicate that instead of all these three digit fractions is just a flat one. But I don't know, I guess we can hear some other is another is another option. And we haven't really heard if it's a half mil where you would recommend some assume position cuts that maybe aren't filled every year.
Well, so unfortunately, when so we're talking budget versus forecast. If the position has been vacant, we're already counting on savings from that position. So that would be a budget reduction, but it wouldn't actually be a forecast reduction, which is what we really need to see in order to have kind of that. There's no way to do that, I think, painlessly. Reducing contingency budget authority, reducing excess budget for positions that haven't been filled. Those things are not going to have an impact on the forecast. Again, because we don't tax, we don't plan to spend the contingency, we don't plan to spend that salary savings. We count on that to be the savings that you see in your budget every single year. And so that's already been taken account in the forecast. So we actually need to find things that are currently being paid for and reduce those. And so at this point, we don't really have specific reductions in mind. We can go back and and look at some of those, but it's also helpful to keep in mind, for example, CIP is not a great place to look to. Because if it's sales tax cash, that's the only way it can be spent in the first place. And also it's one time savings. If we're going to have recurring reductions, we need to have some recurring savings as well.
Yeah, there's probably some comments, questions.
One question, can you just reminder, one mil, six point four million? Is that where we've settled in?
For twenty twenty four, that's the estimate.
So half a mil is three point two, a quarter mil is one point six million dollars. So we would need, if we were to do a quarter mil, you, we could you're saying that we could take that from fund balance safely. A half a mil at three point two million dollars, we could reduce one point six million for fund balance or two million for fund balance and try to find another million and a half and cuts from reoccurring. That's where you're going.
And that's because we have enough one time cash funded capital projects in this five year forecast that the one point six million could be appropriately spent on from fund balance on those cash funded projects. But then, once we get beyond that, even looking at TRB and some of those things, even that has some operational costs to it where we would need to look at reducing things out. So just wanted to make sure to get that on the radar. So we're not making sausage from the bench next Wednesday if we can at all avoid it.
Oh, I might have a few more questions. All right. Some of our commissioners kind of chime in and then circle back.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we already got two numbers, one point six million, basically, and so point two five or three point three, so point five. Can you quickly tell me what the point two nine, what we lined it off?
Good, to the even twenty nine?
Right.
Yes, we sure can. That is two point three million.
And with two point three, are we going to have to go find some recurring costs?
Probably about three hundred thousand dollars worth would be, we wouldn't necessarily have to do it this year. But we would need to have a plan for it in the next year's budget.
As as we look through and we combine CDVO and aging. It looked to me like we still have the positions on for leadership of CDVO. How much savings do we have? By combining those, I've never seen the savings.
There wouldn't be any savings to the mill levy because those are state funded.
Well, you're just a bear gladshite.
Thanks for the bad news, Tim.
That's all I have. But if I could, in that same vein, you know, Calm Care, because of the new designation is receiving what what seems to be quite a bit more in revenue production than maybe even what was forecasted. How much is coming from general budget? If four million, five million dollars is only coming from general budget or?
Yeah, roughly five million.
Do we anticipate that we're able to offset some of that with some of these increased fees that we're delivering from the CCBA C model?
It's, it would be one thing that we could certainly consider. The bulk of the expenditures of local tax funded dollars for Calm Care are tied to jail diversion programs and that sort of thing. So historically, we've used Medicaid funding to fund Medicaid program recipients and that's what it is. It's something that we could certainly look at.
I'm trying, in my mind, I'm trying to determine. Obviously, I'm, I think what Calm Care, what we have to accomplish to Calm Care is very important for this community. I know we have a million dollar mental health contingency out there that that I don't know if we'll use all a million dollars. I mean, I guess I can't project what's going to happen in nine or 10 months. There's another conversation that I'd like to have. I don't know on the timing of these dual diagnosis individuals that are falling in the gap between Calm Care and our CDVO. And I think that might be some use for that mental health contingency of sorts. The conversation today in regards to mill levy reduction, I want to contend for this in a way. I'm receiving a lot of feedback because Kelly Arnold raised the, I'm kidding, the R and R notice I've received multiple emails. And I've been able to set them straight. It wasn't Kelly Arnold that did any of these things. If this was a notice that was required by law. Feeling my district alone, Valley Center is entertaining a seventy two million dollar school bond. Park City just did a one cent sales tax. Maze is already at sixty one mils for USD two six six. And there's rumors that USD two five nine is going to increase their mil. We have people in our community that are that are concerned. They're very concerned. If you put that on top of what's happened with inflation for the last year, I would just contend that we've got to do the best that we can not to grab every dollar of assessed growth and deliver some sort of relief to our constituents because I don't have much confidence that cities and the the school boards are going to deliver any relief. So I hope that can be the the preface into this conversation that what we're doing. Certainly, we got to balance good government service here on the county side. And for many of it, it's only twenty twenty five percent the county side of what we do for their property tax bill. But that, if we can do our best in that twenty five percent, I think we'll be looking out particularly for those that are on fixed income or small business owners in this community. Those are already living paycheck to paycheck and paying a lot more for gas, groceries, everything. So this is an important conversation. And if we can find any relief for our citizens or maneuver somehow, some way, I think it'll go a long way for the health of this community.
Yeah, and just echoing, you're right. I received my Kelly Arnold letter yesterday. And had done some calculations and and you make a great point. The, in in my tax tax burden, fifty two percent of it is the school district. And then the city and county and state split up the the remaining forty eight percent. So we can take a leadership role. I think we need to reduce something for sure. And and try to somehow message in a respectful way that that all the other taxing jurisdictions that have received a revenue increase based on the value valuation that they take a serious look themselves at internally and try to cooperate with us. But that's just, again, my speech for Communications Department to help us come up with that. What else we got that people want to talk about? Commissioner Howe?
So just, I don't think I actually hit the send button on this email, but I intended to apologize. I I was going to ask Lindsay, can you please identify which funds are actually property tax based funds? And then one ten is obviously.
Yes.
Two hundred, two oh one to two oh nine, can you please explain which one of those are?
Yes, and we do now have an appendix in the back of the budget that that helps with that. So Fund one ten is your county general fund that is by far the largest. Next is Fund two oh one, it's WSU, it's the one point five mils, it's the one we have no discretion over. Then you get to three oh one, which is your bond and interest fund. Again, very little discretion. That's the principal and interest that we pay on debt that's already been issued with a minimal amount of cost for like when Garth comes tomorrow, we have a small amount of contractual budget authority to pay for that. Then you get into the more operational funds. And so you have the aging fund, which is two oh five. And then you have your highway fund, which is two oh six. And those are the five county property tax supported funds. Plus you have Fund two forty, which is your Fire District General Fund. But that's its own, obviously not included in the forecast or anything that we discussed for the county.
And our sales tax revenues, where are they across?
They are all deposited into one ten. And then we pay half of it out of one ten into a capital improvement fund that is not a budgeted operating fund. It's also one of the ones you can find in your appendices.
So when you show revenue to the agency, let's use EMS for example. There are some one ten funds in EMS, but.
Well, EMS is now entirely in one ten. We have moved EMS into the general fund effective twenty twenty two. So when you see revenues for them, what you'll see are their charges for service or any historical, like if somebody's got a delinquent tax that they're paying when the EMS fund was in place, those tax revenues will go there. Otherwise, it's all being received. All the tax revenue for the general fund is received in the CFO Fund Center.
Like on that one, for example, is last year, we had twenty seven million dollar budget for EMS. They sure expect twenty two and change, but there's also shows about seventeen revenue. There's no summary that shows the actual property tax cost for that agency, for example.
We don't do that for any department in the general fund. All of that revenue is received in the general fund. And essentially, it's assumed that the difference between any program revenue, which is what EMS would collect and the total expenditure would be supported either with property tax or any other miscellaneous revenue, sales tax or something like that, or fund balance.
So the revenue side of that particular agency, is that is there a fun number for that as well?
So they they live within what are called fund centers. And so they have a department code. And so those revenues are posted to that department code in the general fund, but the property taxes themselves are not.
Right, okay.
But the charges for service are, and you can see that reflected on their pages in the budget book.
So one of my questions is, some of the pages here that also says multi-funding, of course, I don't know what that is. I assume some of it may be one ten, but there may be other things mixed into that. So.
If you see multi-fund, it means that there's, so a good example would be Calm Care. There may be some funding that's coming in through the general fund. Now that Calm Care Tax Fund has gone to the general fund, it also may be their grant fund two fifty two.
And on the one ten portion portion of that, it may be match money that's required to get the grant, for example.
It could be, but we will show that as a transfer out if that's necessary, because what that means is we're taking the money from the general fund and depositing it in the grant fund to show that it's a match.
So what I'm trying to get to, I guess, is, again, just playing this legislative game that they want us to play. We're going to go cut fifteen point one one nine million dollars out of this budget in property tax funds. You got to know where they are. And you go through page by page, they're they're not really summarized for us to know where that is. And that's the challenge. And so you know, I can look at, for example, Public Safety, there's a lot of one ten in Public Safety. There's some one ten in the culture and rec. The human, the Public Works has some some one ten, but a lot of that is sales tax funded. So that's a little more difficult to figure that one out. The human services part of the budget, there's a lot of multi fund allocations there. So it's really hard to know exactly what's going on. One of my questions is, if we wanted to go look for places to adjust our budget, there's no, there's no summary to know where to look.
I think if you were, so page seventy one in your budget summary section shows all of the different departments. It shows their expenditure and FTEs in the general fund. Then it has the other property tax supported funds. And then non-tax special revenues and the enterprise and internal service. So it does try to break out the twenty twenty four recommended budget by funding type by department.
Okay. And the funding type is the header of the page.
Right. We try. It's not perfect with eight hundred pages, but we try.
I I guess I'm going to have to have some. I don't think anything is going to pass. I would say that upfront. But I have, I have some things I'd like to trim. And I've already mentioned many of those many of those things in this room. Previous meetings, I'm not going to go through that again. No one should be surprised by anything I'm going to come up with. I doubt that anything will pass. But you, again, I think if we want to look for some reasonable things to trim out of this budget, I think there are some opportunities. Just to make that easy, I might just compile all that into one giant motion. I'm sure it won't go anywhere, but we'll just let me work with you to come up with some kind of a motion for myself.
Okay.
A couple of questions. I would like to see the list too, because I had a time because if there's some opportunities and R and R, how much above fourteen million were we at above what the state calls the revenue neutral rate? Fifteen point one one nine?
You don't need me.
Do we know what percentage of that is compensation?
I would say almost all of it. And that is a question Commissioner Howe had asked yesterday, and we'll, we'll delineate that for you.
Okay, but the nearly all of this is in compensation?
Yes. And you can, if you look in the budget book, there's a financial forecast page that summarizes all of the spending. You can actually see the increases. And so you can easily see that increase in compensation across the property tax part of funds.
Good, thank you.
You are beginning to know this book better than I am, sir. Yes, it is. You're exactly right. Okay, so at this point, it sounds like we'll have the twenty, the point two five reduction, the point five reduction and a reduction to bring us to twenty nine point oh. Oh, sorry.
Well, first of all, to follow up on Commissioner Beatty's comments, I concur that we need to show some type of reduction for the people that are struggling right now. We can't compensate for everybody. So they're going to have to bite the bullet themselves. But I do believe that somewhere in the point two five or rounded off at twenty nine mils is the area that I would support. I think beyond that, but it's a step too far for me. But I think you need the motion for all three of those. Who knows what's going to happen on such legislative option day. But I don't think I would support anything above rounding off the point two nine.
Um, I agree at looking at the point two five and then capping it there. That's kind of worrying that, or not point five, but go to the twenty nine, just to see what that would look like. I do think as we're having these conversations, I think it's really important for us to remember that twenty seven million dollars of assets that we're not doing. So I think as we're having these conversations, we need to think about the needs that are already growing internally within our departments that we're not addressing with this budget anyway. And further reducing that means not only are they not going to get those, but potentially that's going to impact what they're looking. So just as we're having this conversation, I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of our staff before making sure that we're saying we want to change the culture here and morale is building that we're not doing anything to to hurt that process. So just.
Okay. Probably isn't the time or the place to bring this up. I'm just curious, though. We have almost eleven million dollars going to WSU this year. And that's one point five mils. And so I'm curious. What is the process by where we could actually reconsider that? I know cities got our obligation legislatively, but we don't.
Well, we have an MOU with the city. And I would have to defer to Justin if he knows the specifics on if or how that MOU would be changed.
I'd have to look into that more fully, Commissioner Howe.
The the point I would share with you, though, is the county is on the hook because of its PBC debt that it issued on behalf of WSU back in twenty fourteen, we're actually on the hook to pay the bills on their behalf from those proceeds through twenty fifty four. It was a forty year bond issue. So despite what statute or MOU would say, we would have some additional complications because of that. We also refunded some twenty thirteen, in twenty thirteen, we refunded some of the PBC debt that they actually got through City of Wichita PBC. That's also a consideration that we would have to go into. It's not that we're necessarily on the hook for that in the same fashion we are for twenty fourteen where we actually issued the debt, but there are some obligations that come with that. So unfortunately, it wouldn't be, well, I don't know. Unfortunately, it wouldn't be as simple as just changing a statute or an MOU. There's going to be a lot of other concerns. And if we want to do that, we'll need to bring Gilmore. There's gonna be a lot of other concerns, and if we wanna do that, we'll need to bring Gilmore and Bell to the table to help us work through, because I think I showed you the book on that, the paperwork for that, it's just astronomical.
Couple of other things, noxious weeds is required by law, correct?
Yes.
About six hundred thousand or three hundred thousand dollars, I forget the number now.
Yeah, it's 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 not much, and we get a lot of reimbursement back through that.
Correct. And then the environmental resources, how much of that is required by law?
I don't know. We would have to go back and dig into that and ask Susan.
But we can. As a question, please, I'd like to ask that question. Storm drainage is another one. It's no more than three million dollars. I'm wondering how much of that's required by law? I don't think any of it.
Well, I think a large portion of the storm drainage relates to the flood control, where we have the contractual obligation with the city that pertains to the accreditation of the um, and that's.
Floodway taking care of that three million dollars?
Yes, it is.
How much of that, above that, is we we do for stream maintenance, I assume is part of the storm drainage fund?
Um, it, well, it's all, it all is in the general fund. Um, but we'd have to look into precisely what those figures are, but we can do that.
We also get a uh, a list of what we do for Department of Corrections. I know there's a lot of different programs that are under that umbrella. Um, there's thirty million dollars in the Department of Corrections. I want you to know how much of that is statute statutory versus?
And that's adult and juvenile that you're interested in, okay? Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Lindsay, thank you for being available and explaining.
Thanks. Thanks for letting us have this conversation. It's nice to have it here instead of next Wednesday.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, and next time.
Okay, and speaking of budget, um, when we when we produced the recommended budget this year and turned it in on July eleventh, the commissioners, we we began to get response back regarding fire compensation. Uh, what was in the recommended budget was a two percent adjustment and a three percent um, step raise for each each person uh, in the fire department. And we we got some complaints from um uh, fire staff. And and the complaints basically surrounded the discussion of there was too much compression in what was adopted last year. Uh, there were people in wrong steps. Um, and just general complaints about about where their compensation stood from last year going into the new year, and the new recommended budget pay plan was going to do nothing to address any of those issues. So a majority of commission wanted that looked at, so HR and finance and the fire chief began to drill into this. Um, and and we ended up coming up with some plans that we discussed with you yesterday that I would like to talk about today, and I need to give the history on on where we're at, where we are. When the bargaining unit was no longer recognized back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, their step plans went away. And so the con, the instruction from the commission at the time was, well, the fire staff will be treated like county staff regarding compensation. Um, last year, we reinstituted the step plan at the request of fire. And so uh, one of the first things that the chief did was took a look at what we'll call perfect fire plan, and I would think it was recommended by one of the commissioners. And that was going back and looking if we would reinstitute the step plan that was operational back in twenty sixteen and brought it forward to today, and each fire staff person was given essentially a step for every year of service, what that plan would look like. And as the chief dug into that and and finance and HR dug into that, became pretty clear pretty quickly that that was going to be cost prohibitive. So we had a recommended budget, we had a perfect fire plan. And then Commissioner How came up with a fifty percent plan where he took the perfect fire plan and basically just split it into two. And that became an option which uh, which is on the board today. Additionally, HR and the chief took a look at using Evergreen Analytics, which talks about giving people compensation based on how long they've been with the county and how long they've been in their current rank and some other mathematics that I want Sheena to talk about. She's on Zoom today, but she'll she'll address us. Um, and we came up with a twelve step plan using Evergreen Analytics. We looked at, and that and that helped, all of these plans helped with compression, putting people into a more right step. It began to uh, uh produce results that the commission could consider moving forward. The sheriff is in a fifteen step pay plan, as is EMS. So the question was brought up, what if we put fire into a fifteen step plan to make them consistent with other county operations that are in fifteen step plans? So Sheena and the chief and 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 Lindsay went through and crafted a fifteen step plan um, using Evergreen Analytics, so that became the fifth option. When we discussed with you yesterday, and what Lindsay has on the screen today is the financial forecast of each of those options, and that's what I'd like to talk about today publicly and get some direction from commission on how you wanna move forward and and what we will set for motion next week uh, at budget adoption, so um I don't think I forgot anything there, but uh, so I'd like Sheena to go first and just talk about the Evergreen Analytics and a high level view of what we use to look at that and place fire officials into that kind of plan. And then I want Lindsay to talk through what's on the screen uh, with regarding forecast. So Sheena, if we, if you can hear us and you and you've got audio, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. Yeah, we were able to work with the fire department to go through each of the scenarios, the twelve step and the fifteen step. We use the same methodology that we've used in the other Evergreen studies, and that information is available on E-line. All of that methodology has been available on E-line for quite some time. What we did was we looked at each of those ranges and the differences within those ranges, we calculated that by um, dividing by thirty and then finding the parity segment. We then took that parity segment times their time in position, so they received a hundred percent credit for their current classification, and any other time at the county, they received fifty percent credit, which is how we've used that across the board. We then took that time in position uh, number and multiplied that by the parity segment and then applied it to a step plan. I will tell you that no one landed on a step exactly, so we always rounded up so that an employee would not lose any money. We did that consistently across the twelve and the fifteen step plans to come up with what we would consider their new wages in twenty twenty four. All of our calculations, um, we've worked with the fire department to make sure that um, we didn't miss anything. We're going through all of those with a fine tooth comb, um, and our numbers are matching, and again, we're on the same page as the fire department. But those calculations, how we work those, that is available on E-line. Again, anyone can access that information.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheena.
Could you bring the spreadsheet back up, and Lindsay, could you walk us through the financial forecast?
Absolutely. Okay, so um, commissioners, you should also have this sheet in front of you. Um, it's exactly the same as what you saw in your briefings yesterday. But uh, as Tom said, there's the base, which is what was included in the recommended budget. So that's kind of um, the baseline for all of these different scenarios that you see, and there are four alternatives. The first one, of course, is the fifty percent plan. You can see that in this scenario, um, which again, this is looking at kind of the perfect world plan and then splitting it in half. Um, that adds additional costs for salaries and wages of about six hundred seventeen thousand. Um, what that then does in the table next to it, the um five columns with a year, this is the long-term financial forecast, and what this shows is the impact to each year of the forecast based on these plans. If it's a black number, that means that we expect the fire district to be, bring in more revenue than in um, money it spends in the course of a year, if it's red. It means that it will be deficit spending. Just a reminder, deficit spending really should be tied to one-time type uh, issues. You really don't wanna do a lot of deficit spending for recurring costs, for example, like personnel. Um, because we know that those costs will go into perpetuity, and eventually the fund balance will run out. So with this plan, you can see we start out with some really modest um, deficit spending. Uh, that is not hugely significant, however, when you get toward the outer years, you're seeing a seven hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollar deficits, those exceed the one-time costs that are in the forecasts for those years, which mean that we are deficit spending for personnel costs. Um, we end with roughly five point five million dollars for simplicity, I'm gonna call it cash in the bank. Um, and we know that our goal, again, the Government Finance Officers Association has the best practice that you keep about twenty percent and or two months of spending um, in your reserve. This gets us, I mean, I'm not real worried about this bottom line number, but as I told all of you yesterday, my concern with the red in the outer years here is the trajectory that we're on. Um, obviously, this is not a sustainable course. Um, the next option, row three on this, is Evergreen twelve steps. So um, you've already heard the methodology of how this was done, as opposed to the fifty percent plan, which is based on a uh, traditional step placement. Um, this, either of these two Evergreen plans that we'll talk about will be a hard right turn um, from where we've been with that type of approach. We will abandon the idea of where you ought to be on a step plan based on a three percent growth over a number of years. Instead, this is looking at it through the Evergreen methodology, and we would all have to be complacent with walking away from that kind of more historical look. Um, but we also know that this gets people where they should be paid based on their time in service and time at the county. So again, you can see this adds about three hundred fifty thousand dollars to what was included in the base forecast. You can see that the first three years actually continue to allow for an operating surplus. Um, and then the deficit spending that we see in the final two years, um, when actually looking in the forecast of vehicle replacement and lease principal and those things, uh, the one-time costs uh, cover this. So this would be an acceptable plan. Um, and it's where I'm I'm most comfortable with all of these. Um, not that that necessarily matters, because this is a policy decision for you all. Um, but that would leave us with seven point eight million in the bank, well above that ending goal. Evergreen fifteen.
Goal is about seven is the magic number?
The the, it's about that five point seven million dollar number, that far, or you call them in.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So that's kind of where, now again, that's the minimum we wanna keep. It doesn't necessarily mean we wanna meet that, because if we meet that, then that means we don't have any discretion to spend any more fund balance. Um, so that's not necessarily a a goal to get down to, it's just the goal we want to maintain. So um, okay, Evergreen fifteen steps, uh, this one has about a six hundred ninety thousand dollar cost versus the base forecast. You can see, again, very modest deficits in the first few years um, with some of the same trajectory issues that I was concerned with uh, on the fifty percent plan in those last years. This does produce um, below the estimated goal for that ending fund balance. And then the full fix, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time talking about, because if you look in that column L up on the screen, you can see that we're actually insolvent uh, by the end of the forecast under this plan, so I don't wanna spend a lot of time going through these details. So again, the assumptions for this are that we have four percent assessed value growth each year. Um, the assumption is also that we keep a flat mill levy rate with where we are now. Um, so there is some, I'm, I mean, if if assessed value grows beyond that, then there's probably less risk associated with this plan, but there's also been conversation about potentially reducing a mill levy rate. Um, that also adds an element of risk, and four percent. Um, the Fire District Advisory Board will actually see this Thursday, but just a reminder of how volatile um, the Fire District's assessed value has been over the last ten, fifteen years. Um, so while we count on four percent, there's no guarantee that that will always happen either. So um, lots of options for for changes and variables to change in this. Um, but these are the scenarios that we've seen, and I'll let the experts maybe weigh in on their preferences as opposed to mine. Oh, just kidding.
Did I hear you say that the the advisory board's gonna hear this, which is coming?
Not necessarily this, but they'll see the assessed value, how that has been volatile over the last ten or fifteen years. We're kind of giving them some background on um the the Fire District's financials. Yes.
Was there any reason they can't see that?
Uh, the the concern I would have is that they are so new that I don't know that they necessarily understand the nuances and the history. Um, but if that's something that the commission would like us to share, I'm more than happy to do whatever you all would like.
But they're also an advisory board.
Right.
That we're not obligated to take their recommendation, but we've gone through this whole process of creating this board. And now the most important decision we're gonna make, that's gonna carry forward and do your forecast of twenty twenty eight, that they ought to at least have an opportunity to see it. I I would recommend that we allow the board to see this, if they have anything they'd like to say about it, by we're they're an advisory board, we should listen to what they say, but again, whatever, if they make a recommendation that we don't believe that we can sustain, we are the ultimate people that vote on.
Um, Chief, do you have anything you wanna comment on? So?
No, right now, we've met and we've gone through all these plans, um. You know, we we created this um, full fixed plan at the request, Commissioner How back in late May or early June. And um obviously, it was too expensive, so we we went back and we worked with on this fifty percent plan and got this conversation started, and and when we worked with HR, um you know, we saw some compression issues in the fifty percent plan, and that's at the point when um, they suggested we try to review and see what Evergreen does to our scale. And so we did the twelve step Evergreen plan based on our current pay ranges. And um it it did a night, it did a better job of of dealing with compression. However, the problem, it it left us short of where I felt we needed to be. And so that was when we generated the idea to come up with the um, fifteen step plan and go to the fifteen step plan like um, EMS sheriff have, and and when we did that, that did a, what we would consider the a great fix to the, to the program. However, it's borderline right now, whether it's fiscally feasible, so that leaves us um, caught between um, those plans, and you know, we obviously, we we met with the um, fiery union board uh, two weeks ago, and took all the names out and let them look and see how the compression got shook out, and you know, they were very happy with that fifteen step plan and the way it shook out, but we're back to whether it's economically feasible and where we can go. Um, we've, we've went through the budget, we see that some apparatus purchases that we're gonna be having in later years plays a role. There's some potential, maybe we can push some of those back a year or two. I mean, we've got a mobile air truck that that we might be able to push back, um and the hazmat truck, I mean, there's some, some other things that we might be able to do in the future to help the financial forecast that way, so anyway, obviously, from our standpoint, we believe the fifteen step is is the fix to our pay scale, whether we can get there or not within the budget forecast, then that's the way it is.
Yeah, well, thanks for all your work, Chief, on on being part of the team with finance and HR and management. Uh, it it was comforting for me to know that you all were looking at this uh because we we knew it needed addressed, uh, but this is much uh a much more uh a much better way to uh, come to options for for consideration. What else we have?
I do, I got a comment and then a couple of questions. I I wanna remind everyone that the focus on this, this entire direction the last few months has been on staffing stability and compression issues, uh, solely focused on those things. Um, and I think Evergreen twelve steps takes us a good distance in that pursuit. Um, as Chief has said, as fire guys have said, as everyone else has said, Evergreen fifteen solves the problem. We're done with compression issues. People are more aligned in their correct steps, and we can, we can finish this thing with one with one move here and going to Evergreen fifteen. This, when I look at the forecast, I I know that it's built upon seventeen point nine mils and four percent assessed growth. Um, and I know when you look at the forecast, we're looking at fifteen, Evergreen fifteen, I know that feels um, uh, like a gamble. Uh, I I think those that live in the district, um, and we see everything that's happening in our district, like Park City and in uh, what is coming in Bel Air after the abatement, but also in Mays, and then all the planning commission work that's being done there. I have less trepidation living in the district, as a taxpayer in the district, uh, that that we're gonna stay at four percent or less assessed growth. I believe that we're gonna have more uh, opportunity for growth there. I'm leaning towards finding a way to yes for Evergreen fifteen, because it solves what we set out to solve. The staffing stability and the compression issues. Um, and finding that balance with financial stability and health is an important one, but I, this this does it, and if it doesn't, if we get to twenty seven budget and we didn't realize if we get to twenty seven budget and we didn't realize the assessed growth and this forecast for finance looks bad, we have opportunities to adjust it at that point in time because the fund balance will still be in good shape at that point in time. And there's still conversations that we're having with Lindsay and Justin. I think you're getting involved on the station debt that it might be owed to the Fire District that will also enhance that fund balance. So I guess as someone who lives in the Fire District, I don't have as much trepidation on the future of the Fire District and the assessed growth. And I'm more comfortable with Evergreen fifteen. And, and fixing this once and for all for these firefighters, doing right by people, doing right by our firefighters and doing right by the staffing stability in our Fire District. I do have a couple of questions. One question in particular. What has been left out of this conversation many times is and I don't think it's been intentionally left out, but it hasn't been top of mind is there's some positions in the Fire Department that are incredibly important, that are hard to replace. And that's the mechanics of our Fire Department. Has this plan, when we talk Evergreen fifteen, how does the mechanics pay fit into this? We lose some of these mechanics or if we lose momentum or morale, some of these mechanics, it will have a detrimental impact on our entire Fire District. So is Evergreen fifteen, does it take into account the mechanics? And do we need to do some more dissection in these mechanics pay?
We discussed that yesterday in our meeting with HR and, and Sheena and Lindsay and, and the manager and Rusty and I. Yesterday, we discussed the mechanics and putting them into, in their current ranges into these plans did not do anything to, to advantage them. So we have to go back and we have to reclassify them and look at them individually. And we've had pledges that we would do that. That, but that is not in this, but you're right. We, we have to address them. They're very valuable. They're, I, I say it repetitively that if you want to damage my job, take away our chief mechanics and, and I can replace a firefighter easier than I can them. So I could, you can replace the fire chief easier than them.
So what kind of timetable? What kind of timetable on that conversation of mechanics are we on? Are we, is that active? Are we having that conversation right now?
Yeah, we are. And it's going to have to be before end of year.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we had that. So I, I know this is a big conversation and I remember watching from afar. The conversation last year and how challenging that was for the Fire District. I, there's an opportunity here really to leave and an opportunity to set the tone and and then next year we come back and we look at some other departments that are going to need the same type of attention. But this is something for our Fire District and these firefighters that I think they're deserved. And there's a real opportunity to leave here and do something right by these people. So.
How many mechanics are in the, what's that number about?
We have two mechanics now in our budget. We have for the third one because our overtime was over a thousand hours a year. You know, one, one thing I, I want to mention about our mechanics that, that goes not mentioned very often is our staff vehicles and our squads and our brush trucks, you know, they buy those as just basic fleet vehicles and they put them together and they build them and and like right now, they're getting ready to build a squad. They will save us a hundred thousand dollars by building that squad in-house versus farming it out to a fire equipment company. And so we're saving a lot of money. They, they truly do a great jobs and they save us a lot of money that way.
Thanks for answering that. Good. Yeah. Commissioner Des?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, if you remember a couple of weeks ago, I spoke in favor of the fifteen step plan, but that was before I saw all of these charts that Lindsay and, and finance put together. I kind of still like the fifteen step plan. But we've always said, you know, across the board, we can't fix everything in one year. And we've been working diligently across the board for all of our staff to try and and recover from some of the disastrous effects of, of previous commissions that locked us into things that are, we're trying to recover from today. My question first of all is if we go with the twelve step plan now, how hard is transition to the fifteen step plan if we see the forecast was positive?
I, I want to give Sheena the opportunity to speak. Sheena, do you want to talk to that?
Sure. If that was the will of the commission to start with a twelve step, we, we could most certainly do that. We would look where everyone's placement was going to be. And then when it was decided upon to move to a fifteen step, we would make those adjustments based on where they're at within the current system. So essentially saying we wouldn't readjust them twice. We would just move forward with a new plan.
Well, I appreciate that answer. I don't like to see us forecast something that we may not be able to live with in the future. That's why it'd be nice if we could not fix everything in one year, that we could take a look at going part of the way and then finish it up in a future year. I don't live in the So this doesn't have an impact on me, but mine's the biggest district out there and everybody I've got that I represent live in the Fire District. So I have to make sure that I'm representing all of these people that are residents in my Fire District. And really one of the biggest problems, and I've talked about this with six and a half years now, is that we have a whole lot of people that are using our Fire Department or paying zero mils towards the support of. And that's absolutely wrong. And I've said that over and over and over again, that we have agreements out there that are killing us. And I, I am entirely opposed to these agreements that we've got. We tried to bring it up a couple of times. And of course, we bring all these fire chiefs in from across the county and they've got stripes all the way up their arms and and they don't want to see how that they could quit paying one or two mils to their local volunteer fire department and start paying, it wouldn't be eighteen mils. I can tell you that it'd be much less than that. And so I'm going to continue to advocate against all of these agreements that we've got because they are harmful to the Fire District. We can lower that mill levy easily if we had everyone that's receiving support from our Fire District as part of Fire District number one. So I'm kind of interested in what our advisory council says on Thursday a little bit. I have always told you I was leaning towards the fifteen step, but I, I, I would like to not take the bite all at once. If we can transition to that over a year or two, I, I'd feel a lot more comfortable. Thank you.
Yeah, Chris Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions and comments. So how do we do the, how we, how are we handling the training officer position today? We don't have it staffed currently. It's a proposal for this budget. It's like, how are we handling our training without that training officer today?
We have it as a double fill right now.
What does that mean?
That means we allowed the Fire Department to, I think it's a lieutenant. It's captain to fill that until the time comes when this position will be budgeted. So they've had a double fill for operationally for a couple of years.
Means there's two per, two people in the same position. Occupying the same position number.
I'm, I'm a little bit indifferent on this, but just a thought. So one of my goals is to get the salary for our existing staff up to competitive wage. And I think that the the perfect, again, the perfect world is really where, where I, I love to go if we had the money. We don't have the money. So I, I can see that position. In terms of the twelve step plan, if we were going to go that direction, I think that the fifty percent plan, I call it the STB plan. Is the best option for twelve steps if you're going to go that direction. And doing that, again, this is a five-year projection, the five-year projection, the imbalance that we're looking at is, by the way, is close, that, that in, that ending balance difference is the closest to our goal out of the five options. The difference is, it leaves us about a point one five percent challenge. Other words, over the next five years, we've got to find a way to come up with, you will, the, the difference in those two numbers is, is two hundred and four thousand dollars. But over the five years, we're going to spend more than a hundred thirty six, about a hundred forty thousand, sorry, excuse me, a hundred forty million dollars over the next five years. And so we're basically short two hundred thousand out of a hundred forty million. That's a point one five percent challenge. I think we can handle that. You want to look at this another way, I, I actually don't think the twelve step Evergreen plan is an option. And the, the basic reason why is I don't think it addresses the real problem of the, the misplacements. I don't think it's addressed adequately. And one of our challenges, of course, is to pay our folks competitively. And I think if you end up in that Evergreen twelve step plan, I think you're going to see maybe not to the same degree that you would with the the recommended budget based plan. I think you'd see an exodus of our, of our organization if that was to be what we ended up on. So I think it's better, each one of the, each one of these options is better than that. But I still think the Evergreen twelve step plan, it leaves a lot to be desired. It doesn't really solve the misplacements, I think that are, that are, that are the reason we're having this discussion is, is the misplacements needs to be fixed. And I think that the Evergreen twelve, fifteen step plan does a good job of that. Is it where we need to go ultimately to Commissioner Dennis's point? I don't think we're there yet. It's not a one-year fix. This is a great big step in the right direction, but it doesn't actually solve it a hundred percent. It still, it still leaves some work to do. Maybe not next year, maybe not two, two or three years from now. Eventually, at some point, we may need to go back and address this idea that people are still not going to be placed perfectly in that matrix where they belong. So I don't, again, the perfect world is unaffordable. I would be very glad to support the Evergreen fifteen step plan. In terms of the way they calculate that, you know, if we look at, it worth that a hundred forty million dollars over the next five years. Our imbalance is roughly eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's about a point six percent challenge. We could, I think we can probably solve that problem over the next five years. Also, this is based on the four percent growth. Which I again, depending on what the legislature does, it doesn't really cap what we have to do here. It does give us a, a cap to deal with, but whether that passes or doesn't pass under SCR sixteen eleven, I think we'll have to see what happens. I'm not so sure it's going to pass. It might. I think there's reasons why it won't pass. But regardless, whether we end up with a four percent cap or not, I still think that the Evergreen fifteen makes the most sense. If you want to pay for, I know this is not what you want. Having a training officer is a nice to have. It'd be great to have a training officer. That's a hundred twenty-one, almost a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars a year. But we're making a choice to fund that now. And I'd rather see the money go to other existing staff. If we can somehow manage and absorb, we can absorb that responsibility with other staff. At least a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars to fund this. And that point six percent challenge is essentially solved on the front end rather than the back. I'm not sure this is the right year to add that training officer is my point. I'd like to have a discussion about that. But again, whether we do the training officer this year or not, the fifteen steps, the Evergreen plan, I think is where we ought to go.
Well, Commissioner, just to clarify, because that position has been double filled, we've essentially been paying that cost already. So it wouldn't be, the training officer is not new cost to the district. It's already baked in because it's been double filled.
You're saying someone's doing their regular duties, they're getting paid a regular wage and they're doing this on top of that.
We've had two people in the same position.
But two people are getting an extra paycheck, so to speak, for the extra work they're doing.
The second person is getting the extra paycheck and has been by virtue of being the double fill. Let me, Doug, would you, or I guess Rusty, would you guys want to speak to that?
Why does it show that as an increase in expenditures this year then? The twenty-four budget shows that as an increase in expenditures.
Because it's a double fill and the budget authority hasn't been there. They've had to use salary savings to cover that up till now.
Well, yes, I still see this as an add to the budget. So however we, how we managed this in the past is an option going forward.
It is an add to the budget. It's just not an add to the forecast.
So what you're telling me is that you brought this up each year and asked to put it in the budget. We have voted against it. And yet you've done it without the permission of the commission. Is that what you told me?
We've allowed them to use salary savings to get operations done down there.
So you're telling me that you went against the will of the board and fill this position for the last couple of years, even though we did not, we purposely did not include it in the budget. I, I am disappointed. That, that goes completely against the reason we have a board of, of county commissioners.
Well, and Commissioner, let me put together the documentation for you on how that's been approved because it hasn't just been for the training officer position. It's been for operations. It's just been a captain position. So let me put that together and I think that will help.
Each year there's been a decision package on this and each year we've denied that decision package.
We are paying for a second captain position, not necessarily the training captain.
You're, you're just using semantics. You're going around the will of the board purposely. That is unacceptable.
Okay, I will put together the paperwork for you.
Right now I'm voting against the budget, if that's even in there. You've gone against what we've told you to do the past several years. I will not vote for the Fire District budget this year if you've got that position. And I was going to vote for it.
Okay, well, in the big picture, I assume a, a fire person that's newly hired needs some kind of training. So I don't really, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another, but I, just like any other department, there's some kind of training that needs to happen, especially in the fire world. So anyway, we're speaking on a big number and just talking about one, one item training, which is I'll be debatable and somewhat emotional. So okay, what else do we have? Comments? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Going back to this plan here. I think the fifteen step plan is ideally where the majority of us want to be. I'll just say that I would worry that we're going to go around assumption that our Fire District is growing without necessarily knowing that's what's happening. I do like the idea of potentially starting with the twelve step and as that grows and as those outline numbers would change, then adopting the fifteen step. But I, I would have concerns immediately going with fifteen when we don't have, we're dipping under that twenty percent in the outer years and that just worries me to do that and say that we, you know, we think it's going to grow and then hope it happens. And if it doesn't happen, I think it's a lot harder to then say we need to take a step back than it is to reevaluate in a year or in two years or every year and see what that looks like going forward. So right now I would say that I'm leaning with starting the twelve step and then trying to get to fifteen step as we can. But at this point in time, seeing that go under that twenty percent, just so that's, that's where I'm at with this point today.
Well, and to, and to add to your comments, the Fire District is in a unique position that there's annexation going on with the twenty cities that are in Cedric County. So and I do believe that there'll be a continued growth in assessed value likely. Again, probably a four percent cap is leaning, is leaning, but the added influence of, of annexation that, that we cannot predict unless people like Glenn Becker know that that's right around the corner. But it's, so it, it does limit a little bit. So I, I, the responsible numbers, obviously if public's looking line three, the, the black numbers in the next years are, are positive and all the red numbers are are negatively impacted. So I, I tend to agree that we can, thank you, Sheena, for saying we could try it. And we evaluate nearly every year, I would guess, as the new assessment assess comes in. So that's where I'm at. What else we have? Anybody else?
Just, again, I thank you for those comments, Chairman. But I, again, I, I think when you go from a twelve step plan to a fifteen step plan, one of the problems we have is when you calculate the misstate, the misstep placement of a firefighter, you end up with a rounding problem. They end up right now with a half a step. And so we round up to solve that problem. If you go from a twelve step plan to a fifteen step plan, you're going to have to repeat that exact same problem again. This structure, as it changes from twelve to fifteen, creates natural problems of transitioning from twelve to fifteen. They're not that far apart in terms of the out, and I'll just say this. The fifty percent plan was was conceived, if you will, as an effort to see our firefighters not leave. Again, Wichita has a safer grant. They're going to have seventy-five firefighters. They were looking at Cedric County as a, as a main place to get firefighters. Chief, you, you said the other day in a private meeting that you thought the fifteen step plan was necessary and was what you prefer. You prefer the fifteen step plan.
It, it is by far the best plan to get us where we need to be.
I think if you don't go there, we're ignoring the wisdom of our chief. And I can tell you by talking to firefighters, we're going to see an exodus of Cedric County fire. And it costs a lot more money to recruit and, and retrain than, than it does to retain people. I'm going to tell you, the fifty percent plan is, I think, a starting point. The, the Evergreen twelve step plan is going the other direction. It's a two million dollar savings to the county Fire District over five years. It saves over two. Lindsay, give me that word, that look. The Evergreen twelve step plan has ending amounts of seven point eight two three. Whereas a fifty percent plan is five point four eight seven. And the fifteen step plan is four point eight six eight. Do the, you compare those with each other, it's about a two and a half million dollar. actually, a three million dollar difference between the fifteen step plan and the twelve step plan, three million dollar difference.
I think it's two point five million, but I think to characterize it as savings is maybe where my weird look was coming.
What I'm saying is your ending balance is growing. You're assuming a level mill levy rate and your your mill, your ending balance is increasing. Our target is five point six, you said five point seven, nine, five point six ninety one million dollars. It's going to be above that. It's it's seven point eight two three million dollars.
Well, and and that ending balance is the minimum we want to have in fund balance. It reflects the twenty percent. It doesn't give us any flexibility to spend for one time costs or anything like that. So we we have if we go with what's in the recommended budget now, we plan to end the forecast with ten million in.
And exactly, we will not have a fire department if that happens.
Right. And I I don't I don't disagree.
I'm sorry, I'm the commissioner. I have an opinion.
We're not going to have a fire department if that happens.
Well, first of all, let's just say one thing. There's no requirement, correct me if I'm wrong, please, anybody. Do we have to have a fire department? Central County Fire District, number one, does it have to exist? By law. The answer is no. If you lose firefighters, you're going to lock the doors on some stations, and we don't have fire district at that point.
All right. Well, it's a broad, I just want the public to know that one commissioner saying we will not have a fire department.
It is a critical issue to pay these people reasonably, otherwise you don't have a department.
Okay.
Well, and I I think the only point I was trying to make is we we would have ten million dollars in ending fund balance under the recommended budget. I think we all agree that's not the right methodology to use. But to say that we have seven point eight million in the bank at the end of evergreen twelve steps, it's still less than what we would have had under what's included in the recommended budget. So I I just don't want to make it sound like we're trying to make money for the fire district through what we're doing because we're spending money through all of these plans, more money than we would have to try and preserve the fire district.
So I agree. I understand the numbers completely. The base plan, in my opinion, is a is completely unreasonable. We would, I think we'd have trouble keeping that department under the proposed plan. It was initially the one that saved, you know, has any amounts of ten point zero five nine million dollars. That one, I think, is a nonstarter. I don't think it's just as bad as the perfect plan. It doesn't work for other reasons. Okay, we have, we have a situation where it's not acceptable to our staff. We have three plans in the middle. The one that's being discussed as a twelve step plan, it is it is better. I agree. Is it enough? We'll have to see what happens. I don't like playing that game. Again, over the next five years, we're talking a hundred and forty million dollars of spending over the next five years. Difference in these plans after five years is three million dollars from the fifteen step plan to the twelve step plan. But the fifteen step plan, I think we have a lot of assurance that we're going to have a department that's going to be very, very stable. The twelve step plan, I don't think we can say that. So I I implore the commissioners to be very careful with this. The fifty percent plan that I developed, I think, is a very good way to solve this problem. It's almost the same numbers as a fifteen step plan. Fifteen step plan, I concede, I think, actually solves the problem slightly better than what I came up with. But if we're going to go to the twelve step plan, I think we got problems. I'm very concerned about the future of the stability of our district. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Chief wants to say something.
Well, so does the commissioner. Sarah wants you.
Thank you. Real quick. So last year, the commission wanted to write by the fire department. I mean, I think that's a discussion that needs to be had in this. It's unfortunate because the way it happened was irresponsible, in my opinion. To try and just put an idea out, called a question where we can't have the full discussion, not let Sheena work with Doug for the two weeks that we had initially asked for to make sure placement was right. We are in the position we are today because of the decision we made as a whole last year. It's irresponsible. That's just the reality. So now we're trying to figure out this discussion, how do we fix some of those problems that we created with that plan? Knowing that we were doing what we were trying to help fire and make sure that we address some of these concerns about fire leaving to go to Wichita and everything else. Because of those decisions, now we I feel like we need to be extra responsible on how we move forward with fire. I'm not saying the fifteen step plan isn't the right plan. I think that addresses the needs the best that we can. But I don't know if we're in the position to do that responsibly. So if we're looking at responsible governance, if we're looking at how do we do this in the most appropriate way where we're not hoping that it works out, but we see factually that it's going to work out, that we're not going to have these issues. I think that's starting with twelve. Like Sheena said, we can adjust from twelve to fifteen. I don't like, like I said before, governing on assumptions. I think what happened last year was detrimental to the fire district, and now we're cleaning it up. That's just the reality of where I think we're at right now. So we can argue about this all day, but that's how we're how we got here. And now we've got to figure out the right path forward. We all apparently have different ideas on the best path, and I think that's okay. I think that's what makes us a stronger board. But at the end of the day, I am not going to vote for anything that's I feel is going to be irresponsible again. And I think that we're dangerously going down that path where it's going to get there. So I think we need to handle this as best as we can, but I think that's that's all I think.
Chief, you were going to say something?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman, for a chance to speak to that. You used the words irresponsible and detrimental. Let's let's roll the clock back. And let me ask Lindsey, did I start at the very end of that process to start this proposal? Last year, the very end of the process, did I did I initiate this in the last couple of days leading up to budget adoption?
No, we we had a fire compensation staff meeting discussion. But I do think the plan that was introduced came in pretty close toward the end.
Let me remind, once again, I had, I'm telling the same old story again. I had surgery, emergency surgery. I left the operating room and came to a staff meeting on pain medication to make sure I didn't miss my single opportunity to to present this as a final time as a staff meeting, two weeks prior to budget adoption. I brought it up prior to that multiple times. This was no secret. It's there was a disagreement amongst the commissioners and between commissioners and HR commissioners and Tom Stolz. There was disagreement as to what we should do. But it wasn't like it was a secret. So let's stop with that idea. The idea this was detrimental, I will argue, if we didn't do what we did last year, we would have already had to close the doors of our fire department. It was it was a saving move. It was a it was a desperate move to keep things from falling apart, which they would have done. But it wasn't the perfect solution. We didn't, I didn't feel like I had staff support. We did the best we could with what we had. Thankfully, it passed. But this idea that we did something horrible and detrimental is just not true. End of the day, we didn't solve the problem completely. We got, we bought some time. Now we need to solve it more elegantly, which is what's before us today. But the the words we're using today are very offensive. And you'd roll the clock back. There's a there's a false narrative and there's a truth. Please don't continue to settle on the false narrative. It's just not the way it was. Talk to anybody in the fire department. Talk to the chief. Talk to anybody. We we were, we had to solve the problem different than what was proposed in the budget. Have we not, have we have we passed what was proposed in the budget? We will not have a fire department today. I'm convinced. Thank you.
All right. So unless somebody's got some other comments, I think you bring all these in front of us on the budget day for on the twenty third on the fire district, and we can make motions to approve one, two, three, four, or five, and see how the votes happen. And you go ahead. Okay. Oh, Sarah, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead. You want to respond?
Well, I just wanted to say, because I feel like there are now words being put in my mouth that I did not say. I agree. I think we all agree that last year something different had to happen, which is why we all voted to pass this as we did. Problem, in my opinion, on where we failed last year is we asked for two additional weeks. That did not change the timeline of implementing anything to have HR and Doug work together on the steps. That, to me, was irresponsible, not saying that we should not have done anything. So please don't say that I think that we should not have done anything for fire because that's completely inaccurate. I think the way it went about, we went about that decision was irresponsible to do because we were not ready to vote for it. We didn't understand the repercussions at that time on what that would happen and then what we would be facing today. And that is my point here, and I don't want to do the same thing next year. I don't want to have the same conversation next year where we're saying I wish we would have known this or, you know, whatever the case is. So please just don't don't put words in my mouth that I don't think we should have done anything for fire because that's completely inaccurate. We all did. That's why we voted for it the way we did. Thank you.
Commissioner Des.
I think, Mr. Chairman. Well, I believe discussion is good, even if it's emotional discussion, because we have to understand what each of us feel in our heart on what's important. I agree last year it was it was absolutely the wrong decision. We made it the at a very pressurized moment. We had the chief getting ready to come up to speak, and we didn't even give the chief an opportunity to speak. We didn't give Sheena an opportunity to talk about what they thought was going to be the best thing forward for the fire district. Instead of allowing us to have a discussion, we cut off all discussion. And that is not the way that we need to be able to move forward if we can't listen to what the other commissioners have to say and can't listen to our professional staff that we rely on to give us advice. And we didn't do it. We cut off all discussion and we suddenly had a vote on something that now we're trying to fix. Thank you.
Right. Any other? Okay, Commissioner Al. Sarah, okay. Any of the electeds here? Chief, you have anything? You want to add? Okay. All right. Well, it was a a good discussion. I think you heard a lot of comments and we will see what happens a week from tomorrow. Okay. Anything else, manager? Okay, all right. With that, then we will have a mission meeting tomorrow. We'll see everybody at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Thank you.